Let's call to order the City of Marine City. Virtual meeting, phone conference, Thursday, May 7th, 2020, 7:00 PM. Let's take a moment of silence for our dearly departed and those affected by this horrible disease. And let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, for liberty.
Justice for all.
Justice for all. All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
All right, moving on to, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Callahan.
Support, Merchant.
Any questions or concerns about the agenda? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Next, we're going to move on to public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. This is your time for you to raise issues. The Commission will not respond, but issues will be forth upon as necessary. Anyone like to speak? Is there anyone that would like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the City Commission's regular minutes, April 16th, 2020. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Bryson.
Support. Callahan.
Any corrections, deletions, or substitutions on the minutes? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, which just, uh, is the Marine City Garden Club flower sale. It's the only event listed.
Um, I guess I'd like to move that to, uh, item 11 due to the dates on that. It's 5/16, 5/17. Can they do it during that? Is that considered the same thing as any other thing with flowers? Just asking.
Yes.
Okay, so then forget it.
Yeah, this, yeah. I spoke with the police chief on this, and as long as they adhere to the requirements from the executive order, they can move forward with this legally.
Okay.
So we're back to, we do have a motion for this. Chris, do you got a motion?
No, we don't.
Can I get a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, Bryson.
Support, Verkaman.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner, Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're now moving on to financial business, which includes disbursements, including payroll for $146,965.84. Can I get, please get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve disbursements, including payroll for $146,965.48, Callahan.
Support, Verkaman.
Any questions or concerns on disbursements?
Yes, I have one, Hendrick, here.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Page four. Elaine, um, I know at one time we had gotten a grant for these body cameras, but I see we're paying for them now. Did we ever get all that covered with the grant at one time? Because I know they got rid of the ones they originally got, and then they were getting new ones, and so what's the scoop on this?
Uh, this is something that's due and payable. It's actually a bill that we got that originally, I guess, went out back in October. I don't know if it was blocked by our spam filter or not, uh, but this was approved at a previous meeting. It's just that it's taken this long.
That still doesn't tell me. So is this per a grant or not?
No. No, this was part of what was approved.
Okay, so they did get a grant though at one time.
I think it was for some of the equipment.
Well, I remember that they got a grant, and they didn't get the equipment because they said it was defective, and they were waiting for new equipment, so I don't know whatever happened to that, so just, that's my only question.
Yeah, I'll make sure that, uh, it is something that was approved to be paid and not part of the grant, but this is something, my understanding, outside of the grant.
Okay.
And we did check meeting minutes to make sure that the approval was in there.
Any other questions on disbursement? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. 9A Amendment, completion of budget schedule.
So I provided everyone with a copy of a proposed amended schedule for the budget. One of the constraints that I had when I prepared this schedule was that I did not want to presume that City Commission was willing to have a special meeting. However, I would like to change the schedule to meeting for the budget workshops, May 18th through 20th, if needed, and then having a special meeting for the budget hearing and adoption on May 28th. As part of that, we could potentially cancel our regular meeting on May 21st and just have the financial and consent agenda business on the meeting, May 28th, along with the budget public hearing.
How, how come we moved the time to seven to nine now instead of six to eight, like it's always been?
You know, that, that was something when I originally sent out that email to all of you, I forgot about that, so we can certainly do it back to the six to eight.
I'd prefer the six to eight, I don't know about anybody else.
Agreed.
Absolutely.
Sounds good to me.
So we're going to do it 18th, 19th, 20th, from six to eight.
Okay, and then what about the meeting on the 20th? Did you want to cancel that regular meeting and then just have the special meeting for the public hearing on the 28th, and then have the financials at that meeting?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds more, uh, you know, we don't need to have an extra meeting in between there. Does anyone have an objection to them doing it that way?
No.
No. All right.
So we're meeting in person for these meetings?
Well, the stay home, stay safe order unfortunately has been extended until the 28th, so it's not something we'll be able to do for this. If you recall, one of the reasons that we originally were putting this off was in hopes that we would be able to do that. Extending this out another week gives us an opportunity to possibly get some better numbers from the state and then get things ready for a virtual meeting. One of the things that I would like to do with the virtual meeting is at least put up the budget pages that we are on so that we can work on that with the computer screen available to people that are logging in from the computer.
Excuse me, Elaine, why are we doing this? Other communities are having meetings and then, so we can at least get business done. Why can't we have a meeting, a regular meeting instead of this virtual phone meeting?
Um, I'll let Bob address that one.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm right here. Um, you know, we, we went, we spent a little time on this, we spent a little time on this today, Mr. Mayor, and if, it would probably be acceptable if you could, if you could limit the group, but even limiting the group, um, you know, it, it's not exactly in accordance with, um, with what the governor is saying. I don't have any other communities that are having in-person meetings at all. Um, there might be some out there that are doing it, but I don't have any yet. There was some, some indication, you know, if you could keep the, the room socially distanced at six feet and limit the number of people to around 10, then, you know, you could, you could possibly have public meetings. But then you run into the issue of, of the public being there, and how are you going to shuffle in and out, uh, members of the public without violating the Open Meetings Act? Um, it, it, it just didn't seem to be, uh, be panning out. Do you know some people who are having in-person meetings?
I believe the City Algen Act does. They videotape their meetings, or have a live meeting.
And they have the public calling in?
Mm-hmm.
I actually emailed a couple of the other managers, and, and I know that the city manager of Algen Act said that they have been doing the telephone meetings, so I'm, I'm not sure where you got that information from.
Probably the same place, we've got, you know, misinformation. Maybe I'm wrong, but, and this is just so frustrating and hard.
I, I agree.
Uh, everyone agrees that these are difficult, but I, I would, I would advise right now that you continue on with, um, these forms of meetings, um, and I, and I, again, would state that I, I do believe you do it better than most, um, because I've been at some that are just chaotic, and, um, I really think we should carry this out until June.
And then it'll be July, and then it'll be August, and if I sound upset, I am.
So I did look at some of the information from the governor today, and I can talk a little bit about that during my manager's report, that I think there is a light at the end of the tunnel.
Hey, Dave, Lisa, um, one of the things is, you know, I worked at home for a lot of years, and I did virtual meetings for a lot of years, and as long as you use the screen image and she can bring up the budget, it's really not that bad. I mean, I, I know not everybody else is used to them, but I mean, I did them for, uh, close to 17 years this way. So, um, as long as you can see what's on the screen so that everybody can be focused on it, it works out very, very well. In fact, there's also a little paddle there, if you notice, that people can click on it to raise your hand if somebody has a comment.
I'm looking at a phone.
I know, but if you hook in a laptop, you can see the whole thing.
I don't believe we were issued laptops.
No, I'm using my own, but, you know.
Don't believe we were issued tablets. I don't even believe we were issued. We weren't even issued the packets, I had to print that off someplace else.
Yeah, you could get the tablet.
Do I sound frustrated? Do I sound upset? It's because I am.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I believe that, uh, Cotterville and, uh, Chinatown should be having meetings. They get.
Yes.
But those are five-member boards, that's the difference. I, I, I hear you, Dave.
All right, so back to the, so we're going to have a virtual budget meeting. Is that what the, the consensus from the board is?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, sort of sounds like.
I don't know whether they have a meeting, but.
So I am, uh, okay, I still don't know how, I guess I'll have to get my laptop and figure out how to use it. Moving on, all right, does everyone, good with the schedule then, as it's laid out?
Do we need to make any motions for these dates?
That would be helpful.
All right, this is Hendrick, I'll make a motion to have the budget hearing meetings, May 18th, 19th, 20th, from six to eight PM, virtual. Can I, I gotta make them in two motions, right?
No, you can make it all together.
And that we cancel our May 21st meeting and move that to the May 28th for the regular meeting and the budget hearing.
Perfect.
Support, Callahan.
Any questions on that?
Did you say six to eight, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We should, we should probably reiterate, reiterate that the May 28th meeting will be at seven, the special meeting, our regular time, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's right, meeting, yeah.
Not that it matters, but we do understand that May 28th is a Friday. I don't know what we'll be doing.
May 28th is Thursday.
No, it's not, it's Thursday.
Yeah, sorry, I'm in the wrong year. Sorry.
Wendy just scratched out 2020, she doesn't want it.
Wendy, we're glad you, we're glad you admitted that.
Hey, give us, give us something to laugh about, you know?
There you go.
All right, all right, let's get back to it, so we've got the motion, we've got all, everybody's made, uh, good with the schedule. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yeah.
Mayor Vanabosh. Commissioner Bryson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yeah.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to ratification of vote. Elaine, could you explain this for us a little bit?
Actually, I'm going to throw this to Bob to explain.
Um, members of the Commission, you had historically, um, a couple of grant issues that were put before the Commission as agenda items, and after deliberations, you approved, um, both grant, both grant issues, and those grant issues, one was, um, with no match, and I think you had another grant that had a partial match, and you approved all of it with respect to, um, the work that was going to be done on the water plant and the other one with the, the GIS mapping. And as we look back, and as I look back and working with administration, um, you approved everything, and everything is, it looks good in the historical minutes, but I think we, we need to ratify the concept that the, um, that the, that the vendors would be paid, um, so that there, there is a look back in the future of that being approved as well. So I'm looking for the Commission to ratify the, um, the, the, uh, financial aspect that, um, certain folks would be paid under these grants, so there would, like, like Lisa raised today with respect to, was that under the grant or was that not under the grant? I want, I want the records to be, um, to be a little clearer on this, so I'm asking that, and I know there's probably two issues on, on the agenda, but I'm talking about them both right now. I want the, the records to be clear that we are ratifying the payments to the folks who will be performing the service, even though the money's coming back by way of a grant.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Lisa.
All right.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, first off, uh, I realize that we had these grants and that, but I mean, our charter is very clear that, uh, we have to, if we're going to do a contract, it has to come before us, so it's very obvious that wasn't done on the rest of it. Um, and I know the city likes to use Wade Trim, but, um, I know other communities aren't using Wade Trim because of cost factors, so we never apparently approved anything to go with Wade Trim, is that correct?
I think, uh, I think, Elaine, Wade Trim was discussed during the grant process. Let's, let's take them, uh, one at a time. Let's talk about the, the work on the water, the water plant type project. I think we were using Wade Trim because the other entity involved is also using Wade Trim, is that correct, Elaine?
Yes.
But again, no agreement ever came to us to use Wade Trim.
I, I, as I look back, I think that might be true.
Yeah, and, and I know our charter is very clear.
What came to you, what came to you was the concept of the grants.
Correct.
And, and you, you heard out the grant, you looked at all the terms of the grant, what the purpose was, and you voted to approve the grant. And I think in the future, we have to be mindful that when we approve the grant, it still means there's going to be a vendor that's getting paid, right?
Yes, but that means the contract, and by Charter 13.2, that the city manager must bring that before the Commission.
I never actually got a contract from Wade Trim on this because it was going under the SEMCOG contract, and they were just billing there hourly based on the project.
Does this, does, do we have to waive bidding or anything on this?
Well, you're using Wade Trim, I think, because they're the ones, they're, they're the ones, um, doing the same service on behalf of the other entities who are part of the grant.
So you're saying because they did the SAW grant, and now they're doing this one, that's why you're saying you're using them?
Yes.
Correct, but even with the SAW grant, we had a contract.
No, the SAW grant was done through Tetra Tech, that was our firm at the time.
Oh, okay, so this is different.
Well, was, Tetra Tech was your engineer at the time.
Correct, and, and we've never officially, even though the city uses Wade Trim, we've never officially had any contract with them that we have to use them at all times. I'm just asking the points based on, like I said, the charter, I mean, I, I just want to make sure we don't get into this issue again because the charter is very clear on contracts.
Uh, I, I agree with you, Lisa, and that's why, that's why I'm looking back at this, and I want to have a vote ratification so that when someone looks back at this two years from now, um, what happened here is a lot more clear.
So Wade Trim's already done a lot of the work then, apparently. They're getting invoices, right?
Correct.
So it's too late to go with anybody else, we have to go with Wade Trim.
This is Joe Clausen, I'm just wondering how come we, how come it doesn't go out for bits? Seems like everything is, we're waiting for bits, bits, bits.
So, so what I recollect from when we had this grant on, on our agenda last time when we approved it, was that we talked about that, um, the Wade Trim was also the representative for East China, and that it would be cost savings because Wade Trim already has all of the information for the, for the East China plants, and that was why we were going to be utilizing Wade Trim for it, because they can get the grant done cheaper rather than bringing somebody else in that's going to have to do all the information, both for East China and for Marine City's plan.
I understand East China no longer uses Wade Trim, so that's interesting, but I mean, this could have been done before that.
It, it was, it was when they were working for them.
Yes, and they stopped using them because of cost factors.
And that's certainly something we can explore in the future, but right now we have this situation with this, that we're about 85% done, and to clean up paperwork, this is on the agenda for the ratification, like Bob mentioned.
That's fine, I just want to make sure we don't get into this mess again, and anytime we have any type of contract, that it comes before the Commission, is all I'm looking at.
I think, I think, uh, uh, the, the, we, we all need to remember that even when there's a grant, and you know, you spend all of your eyeballs, and all of our attention goes on to the grants, and we still have to remember that somewhere underlying the grant, there's still going to be payment of invoices to a, to a service provider, and, you know, we need to, we need to approve that part of it as well.
I, I guess I don't have a problem with that, I just have a problem that this wasn't brought before the Commission per the charter, I guess that's, that's my point. So I understand we have to move on.
And, and we need to do that in the future, Lisa, you're correct.
Okay.
All right, so right now, Bob, you need a motion to ratify, uh, could you get a subverbage on what you're looking for on this?
Just a motion to ratify the pay, the motion to ratify the payments to Wade Trim as a service provider pursuant to the grant.
Can I get a motion to state that?
I make a motion to ratify the grant, uh, hold on.
The payments to Wade Trim pursuant to the grant.
And the payments to Wade Trim pursuant to the grant.
Support, Verkaman.
Motion support, any, uh, any more questions on this?
Yeah, is that, is that all, is all we're going to hold, is what that is, or is it going to be added on to? Do we have a bottom line?
Uh, the, the amounts that you see before you is, is for the grant.
Is the project complete?
No, it's not complete yet, but the amounts, the, the local max won't ma, won't be more than the amount that's stated in the cover letter.
The bottom of 98.
So, 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 but that, that will complete the, what we're looking for, for the grant or the, for- So, but that will complete what we're looking for, the grant, or the, for what we need?
Yes, that'll complete the grant.
Does that answer your question, Bill? Any more questions on this?
Hendrick, I just wanna make sure that my comments are recognized in these minutes of what transpired as far as the charter goes, thank you.
Is that it, any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Hello, yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the SNCOG Asset Management GIS Data Development, Bob, can you, what kinda grant, what kinda motion are you looking for on this one?
It's the same, it's the same issue.
So could we get a motion for that, so we can start discussion?
Still moved, Callahan.
Support Bryson.
Now, this was a, this, all right, does anyone have any questions on that?
Do we need to list the figures in this? This is sixteen thousand six hundred. Bob?
You can do that in your motion, and name the vendor and the amount.
Okay, so you guys gonna amend your motion?
I'm sorry.
Could you read, uh...
Yeah, I'm trying, I didn't print it, so I'm bouncing back and forth between the agenda and then the actual...
It's page sixty.
Yeah, I see that.
Well, that's the one you're on.
Yeah. So, okay, Bob, what kind of motion are you looking for here? Please help me out.
Yes, I can do that, it's just a motion to approve the payment to the underlying vendor pursuant to the grant, in the amount of sixteen, whatever that is.
Sixteen six.
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen six hundred.
Yes. And it goes to Wade Trim again?
Yes, that's what I was just gonna ask, it goes to Wade Trim again?
That's correct, right Elaine?
That's what it says.
Yes.
Hold on. Okay, make a motion toward the payment to Wade Trim for sixteen thousand six hundred.
Pursuant to the grant.
Yeah, pursuant of the grant.
Cheryl, you second that again, with the amendment?
Support, yes.
It was Jacob, it was Jacob.
Oh, Jacob, I'm sorry.
Support.
Any questions on this? Hearing no questions, we're going to have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to waiving competitive bids for the crack sealant. This is done usually annually, so can I get a motion just to waive the competitive bid at this time?
I'll make a motion, we waive competitive bidding for the crack sealant, I'll Bryson.
I support that, Cheryl Verkaman.
Any questions or concerns on just the waiving of the competitive bid at this time?
Yeah, I wanna know how come we're waiving bids again?
So this company is a pretty unique company in what they do for the crack sealing. They actually provide the equipment, and we just buy the materials from them. We don't own the equipment, there isn't really anywhere else that Mike's been able to find that can lease out the equipment, and it's a very limited time that we're able to get this equipment, because so many other people lease it out.
I read that, I was wondering, lead sucking, whether the lead sucker, everybody's doing it at the same time, so it's hard to do with bid itself between everybody else. I just, I'm just, I didn't, of this, that we, every year, we're just competing, waiving the bids.
Elaine, this is also in coordination with the St. Clair County Road Commission too, isn't it?
Um, I don't believe so, no. St. Clair County Road Commission, Mike has spoken to, and they would not loan out their equipment.
Okay, disregard that. Any more questions on waiving competitive bid? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, can we get a motion to approve the purchase of the material for the crack sealant? I'd like to make a motion to purchase the sealant from National Highway Maintenance System for a dollar for a pound. This price includes the Supershot Diesel Muster Machine, free of charge.
Would that be a dollar four a pound for not to exceed ten thousand?
Sure.
Support Bryson.
Any questions on that?
I do, Dave, Hendrick. Okay, so I don't have a problem that we're purchasing this, but I wanna make sure that we're utilizing it to the best of our ability. I know I've brought this up numerous times, I think the crack sealing issue should be also added to the street chart of what's been done, what's not been done. The purpose of this is to save streets, is they get cracks in them, so that they don't deteriorate further, but we have a lot of streets that have never, ever been done, not one time since they were originally paved back in the eighties, and I think we need to go back and take a look at this, instead of doubling up and doing roads that we've already done, and not doing roads that we should be doing. Now, there are some that are too far gone to even bother with, I understand that, but I think that part of it needs to be put on that chart for, so that we're doing this and we're getting the most bang for the buck here.
I had conversations with Mike Ittrich earlier today about what we can do. There was a memo that was provided to City Commission in March of 2018 regarding the roads that we were doing, and at that point in time, roads that were added, because once you start doing the roads, you have to keep doing them. We're gonna try and develop a program where we can maybe alternate year on year to be able to get more roads done. As I mentioned, we have this equipment for a very limited time, it's a very small window, the only way that we would be able to really expand our services much more than what we're doing right now, would be to purchase a machine ourselves, and really, at this point in time, it's not a recommended way to go.
Yeah, well, I understand that, but like I said, we have some roads that are salvageable, and we'd be best to try to get them crack sealed, instead of, like I said, multiple doing, I just saw another one done that was already done, so it wasn't really in that bad a shape, but yet we've got ones that aren't too bad, that have never been done, which could benefit from this, especially since we're only doing two roads a year repair-wise, so that's my only point. And since we have the chart for the roads, we might as well add that portion to it, it would just make sense, thanks.
Any other questions or concerns on? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson. Motion carries.
All right, moving on to Resolution Number 004-2020, Temporary Utility Build Defirmment.
I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution of the city, of Marine City, to approve a temporary utility build deferment program.
I didn't catch a second of that, could you repeat it?
Bill Clausen, support.
Yeah.
Any questions or concerns on it?
If anybody has any questions, I'm the one that kind of handles all of this, so you could direct them to me. We were just looking for a way to help out our community with, you know, all the economic problems that are going on right now. We were directed by the governor in an executive order at the end of March to, you know, restore any water to people that are shut off, and we've been sending out letters in our shut-off bills to anyone, to everyone that's getting one, saying, "We want you to be aware that this is what your outstanding balance is, we aren't going to shut up your water off, we're gonna waive your penalties, but please call us to make payment arrangements." So this is just putting it in writing that we'd like to do this for six months, pending board approval.
Any questions or concerns on this?
Are we gonna discuss this at the budget side too? Because we're losing money everywhere, not just in our water bill.
Yes, we will be able to discuss this during the budget.
Any other questions on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to city managers.
Well, as I mentioned previously in the meeting, the State Home and Safe Order has been extended until the twenty-eighth, so obviously we'll be dealing with that. Couple webinars that I attended, MML reopening communities, and also C-19 updates. Still been having my weekly department head meetings, we've been preparing for the budget workshops. I have also been reviewing some of the state financial reports, looking for indication about where they are with the shortfalls for their revenues that would in turn become revenues from the state to us. There should be another report, I'm hoping, out on the fifteenth, that will give us a better indication for our budget. I've also reviewed the Michigan Comeback Map, which I think was something that the House put together, and also the released Safe Start Plan that the governor just released today. Looking at that plan, it's broken up into, I believe, it's six stages, and we're currently in stage three, and the way that it's set up is each stage looking to see for, see the number of cases. Stage three, we entered because we are a flat line for new cases. Stage four, we will enter when there are steady declines in cases, and then it just progresses thereafter. So looking at it, after the twenty-eighth, if things are going well, it looks like restaurants might be able to be opened, and I would hope that after the twenty-eighth, we will be able to go back to meeting in person. That's all I have.
Any questions for the city manager?
Yes, Callahan, I do have one, where in there do you think things like the, you know, the smaller retails fall in? As far as being able to open?
Probably around when the restaurants initially opened, after the twenty-eighth. That next phase is when restaurants reopen with limitations, and then I think the phase after that is when restaurants can open without limitations. So either by then, or possibly even before then, obviously, we've seen her release some changes to the State Home and Safe Order, and opening up businesses, as they have kind of a, less contact with the public, so she's trying to kind of open the easier ones, the less complicated ones first. All of this information is available on the state's website. I can certainly email all of the board members that most recent plan that she put together.
Thanks, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, Bill Clausen, I'd like to, do you know where we stand with the library? Because I understand that they laid off all the librarians in the county.
I do not know, they haven't really been in communication with me at all, and I didn't really see anything on that plan about when libraries would open. Certainly with my mom being a retired librarian, it's one of those that I do try to keep tabs on.
I, my wife was working there, they laid her off, and then they notified her, they laid all the librarians off, and they closed the library. But I don't know if you heard it, when they were gonna reopen, or what they were gonna do. We have revenue coming in from the library, don't we?
We more so have expenses for the library perspective, for the building, because we own it.
Yeah, but I'm saying, they bring us cash, I don't know what for.
Not that I'm immediately aware of, but I'll look into that, and we can have that be part of our budget discussion as well.
Thank you.
Have you heard anything, I heard that Clay Township maybe was talking about reopening their offices on the eighteenth, has this then been pushed back because of... Have you heard anything, I, we did, I heard that Clay Township maybe was talking about reopening their offices on the eighteenth. Has this then been pushed back because of, uh, the edicts from Lansing?
More than likely. I will be probably talking to Artie in the near future. Um, one of the things that we were looking at for our office come the eighteenth was going to be a phased opening where we were going to have a couple weeks of appointment only, but now that gets pushed back unfortunately.
Anyone else have any questions for the City Manager?
Um, Lisa Hendrick, just one question. So we do have a code enforcement person, but is all that on hold because of this?
Yeah, one of the things with the executive order is that, uh, the governor pretty much said that we can't ticket anyone.
Yes, that's what I thought. I mean, I've had some phone calls, and I've tried to tell him, explain that to him, so I just wanted to make sure I was giving him the right information.
Anyone else? Uh, moving on to Commissioner Privilege. Cheryl, would you like to get us started? Do you have anything?
Yeah, I do actually. Can everybody hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. There is no doubt that COVID nineteen is a horrible virus. I would like to start the change in our verbiage that I feel is becoming a little too much for some to handle, especially children. We are now constantly bombarded with "stay safe" words that we now use almost as a salutation. Let's put things in perspective. We live in a safe country. We live in a safe state. We live in a safe county, and we most certainly live in a safe community. Let's try replacing "stay safe" with "stay healthy," "stay compassionate," "stay strong," "stay positive." This vi- this virus, for some reason, has taught us some valuable lessons that none of the other critical viruses that we have encountered in our lifetime have. We now wash our hands and disinfect now more than ever. This is a great lesson for our kids. Come home from school and wash your hands. Come in from playing and wash your hands. Come in from shopping and wash your hands. These are good things. Let's not scare our kids with words like "killer virus" and that our world is now dangerous. We live in a safe community. Also, please don't judge someone if you see that they are not wearing a mask or gloves. We do not know what someone else is going through. They could have a medical condition. Please don't automatically assume that they are being careless. Do what is right for you and your family, and don't judge others. We will get back to normal. I like the old normal. Thank you very much, and stay strong.
Thank you, Cheryl. Um, Paul, do you have anything for us tonight?
Not tonight.
Bill, you got anything for us?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for staying in and stuff. Rotary Club, not putting on their, uh, flower sales for Mother's Day because of, uh, well, the pretty weather is one of the things. Good snow on Friday, believe that, but have a good day.
Thank you. Wendy, would you like to, to?
Um, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Lisa, do you have anything?
I just said it there, um, eh, I'll pass.
Jacob?
Nothing, thanks.
And, uh, I'm just perplexed, so I have nothing either. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. This is Hendrick.
I support, and I forgot to say that to everyone.
Okay, a motion support, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Can we do a roll call?
Roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Flosson.
Aye.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.